We'll call the meeting of the common council to order. And we'll start out as usual with our pledge of allegiance. Councilman Thompson, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Okay. Did you all have a chance to take a look at the regular meeting minutes for July the 24th? Motion to approve? I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Fitzwater. Those in favor signify by raising your right hand. And it is, it's nothing. Thank you. Likewise, a special meeting on July the 23rd. Did you have a chance to read those minutes?
Motion to approve?
Motion made by Goodman to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Thompson. Those in favor signify by raising your right hand. And it is unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Communications. Information sheet from the animal shelter. Animal staggering numbers.
Yes. The ladies when they left after the last meeting, Mrs. Landis had handed this to me. They forgot to hand that out, but asked if we could include this in your packet for you to review, just as additional information about the cat population. And if you recall, those of you that were present, Mrs. Campbell was here, one of our city residents, and had raised some concerns about the cats. Well, this kind of gives you a different perspective. And then kind of saddled with that, Mr. Grigsby, who is Friends of the Shelter, had stopped by and asked to just kind of give you guys a little more information about their organization and kind of how they feel they may be able to help. I put it under communications because it was more of a communication in addition to what you guys have already heard from Janet from the shelter.
Is Mr. Grigsby here?
I am.
Would you like to step up to the podium, sir, and tell us about neuter and scooter? Identify yourself, sir.
Good evening. I am Robert E. Grigsby. A handful of private Fulton County residents and myself have formed a group called the Friends of the Neuter Scooter. Neuter Scooter is a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organization which offers cost-effective means to neuter, spay, health screen, inoculate felines. Neuter Scooter has been in operation for about 14 years. They nearly monthly visit Hobart, Gary, Valparaiso, Horsell, Rochester, Logan's Court, and some towns in west Ohio. They're very serious in their endeavor to eliminate feral cat populations.
Here.
Dr. Tess Peavy and her staff, again, are very serious in that endeavor. We contacted them, Friends of the Neuter Scooter contacted Dr. Peavy in September of last year, and offered her to come visit the town and render her services. In that time-
Mr. Sir, I'm not familiar with Dr. Peavy.
Dr. Tess Peavy is the administrator, the de facto owner of Neuter Scooter.
Okay. Okay.
As I said, they've been in business for about 14 years. Countless tens of thousands of animals have been neutered and spayed under her, under guidance. In, since September of 2017, Friends of the Neuter Scooter has generated nearly $3,000 in funds with four different fundraisers, which has allowed her to come to town, to the 4-H building, which we have subsidized the rental of. Dr. Peavy has generated great interest in wanting to come here every month. So there's certainly interest on her part to continue, continue coming here. To date, in the seven clinics that Dr. Peavy has been offering her services, she has neuter and spayed 360 animals. Many are feral, some are pets. But again, the endeavor is to neuter and spay and either hopefully find homes for these animals or be released back into the population where they certainly can't, can't repopulate.
And this is the program we hear about where you see a cat with a notched ear if they've been-
Correct. They tattoo Neuter Scooter inside of the ear.
Oh, really?
They can identify the animals that way with their records. So they, they offer a host of other services. You know, all inoculations, health screenings, and so on and so forth. And again, a very cost-effective approach. She charges $20 to neuter and spay feral animals, provided they're caught in a trap and brought to her.
Yeah, that's certainly cheap enough.
Indeed. Indeed. So we feel that there is simply a lot of interest in town, that just a handful of us have been able to generate, you know, that money. And our contact with the people with these fundraisers indicates that there is ample interest in fixing the problem. In my opinion, the greatest obstacle is simply getting the word out there and advertising and promoting that there are alternatives to dropping off animals at the shelter. And again, this is separate from the animal shelter. You know, we hope to, you know, believe that we share the same interest and the same goal in fixing the feral cat population.
Now, when you're providing the service out at the fairgrounds, is the shelter bringing you animals?
They are not.
They are not? Okay. Okay. Do you have any idea why they're not participating with you?
Um, I believe that they have their own program in place.
Yeah.
Uh, I believe students from Purdue, some doctors from there are coming in, or they're taking animals outside of the shelter. I'm not quite sure. But, no, we are at this time not, not working hand in hand with the animal shelter. But we should be. Obviously, we're all, we feel that we're all on the same team and we have the same goal and endeavor, and that is to completely eliminate the feral cat population.
And when the ladies were here last time, of course, this all, it all comes down to money for the animal shelter as such. I would think if there's a, a parallel service going on, ought to be joining together.
Absolutely. Absolutely. At least promoting the ability to have, to have another cost-effective means to, to have your animals neutered and spayed.
And your purpose for coming before us was just to make us aware of your services?
Correct. We believe that the information is simply not being disseminated throughout the community to let them know that in fact there are some alternatives to, to the shelter.
What are your plans for reaching out to the shelter?
Continued fundraisers. We are working with WROI and the Sentinel. They place ads for us and blurbs for community events, you know, to let people know. But certainly, that's just scratching the surface as far as putting the information out there in front of the townsfolk. Sad to say, when we first hosted the, our initial clinic, the Neuter Spay Clinic, I had to ask someone where the 4-H Fairgrounds was located. So, you know, a sign in town with an arrow pointing, you know, 4-H Fairgrounds would be, would be a good start. I believe if we're really serious about the problem and taking this, taking this up, we have to let people know that we are having these clinics. A banner across Main Street two weeks before announcing that we're hosting a clinic. Dr. Peavy has a clinic in, I believe it's her Gary clinic or Hobart clinic. She's, she's capable of fixing 200 animals at a time, and she's often full. That clinic is often full, that she will actually, her and her staff will neuter and spay 200 animals in a day.
Wow.
So the ability to, to fix this problem is there. Community awareness and getting the information out to them is key to making that happen.
Any questions from the council?
The, the money that's been raised to date, has that been used to get the facility at the fairgrounds, or is that used to actually help defray the cost of the neutering and spaying?
Both.
Of-
Both. We have been paying bimonthly, where Dr. Peavy pays one month and then we pay the next. Mr. Klausen at the Fair Board has offered generously a $200 rental on one of the buildings, which is just perfect for Dr. Peavy. When she entered the building, she actually said, "This is just perfect for us." And she was just ecstatic to be able to come back on a monthly basis. So we are subsidizing the building, and we're also offering, on a, on a per need basis, people who bring animals in and just simply can't afford to, to have them fixed.
So for people listening and for us, how does somebody go about making a donation to the, to your 501(c)?
Well, the 501(c)(3) is, is actually Dr. Peavy's organization.
Oh, okay.
The Friends of the Neuter Scooter, we're here to facilitate her coming to town.
Okay.
And we're offering our services. We're not structured yet. We're not quite that organized. But we can certainly be contacted and, and help, you know, show people where the money can go, either through direct payments to Mr. Klausen at the fairgrounds, or to Dr. Peavy, you know, where they can re-seat out for the 501(c)(3).
Okay.
Another option is actually to show up at the clinic. You know, it's a sight to see, you know, 20 or 30 or 40 animals lined up in their carriers and everyone mewling. Dr. Peavy is a very personable person and just loves what she does. And once the animals are released, she'll give a very well-informed speech on a topic of the day. And it would be, it would be something, you know, for someone to just show up at the clinic and offer, offer any help or fund, funding to Dr. Peavy and, and anyone who might show up there. Dr. Peavy's, she'll see someone who comes in with a mother cat and five or six kittens, and the person just shrugs and they say, "I don't know what to do." And she'll give them a generous, you know, break on, on having the animals spayed, because there's no better time to have them neuter and spay than right after birth, after getting birth.
It, it sounds like a very good service, sir. I would offer this piece of advice. We support, along with the county, the animal shelter financially. If you're going to get any traction with this program, you need to develop a relationship with the animal shelter. Meet Janet, work in accord together. And I can't imagine where they would not be open to taking advantage of your services. It is a huge problem, and it can be very expensive.
We certainly hope that we can develop a rapport with Janet. I think that's a necessary pooling of resources.
Yeah, I think that's a necessary step for you to get some traction in this community. Am I, am I off-base there, council? Anybody disagree with that? The, the operation of two entities probably isn't going to get it accomplished.
If I may ask a question, do you have a schedule of when Dr. Peavy will be at the fairground? I mean, is that set out of here in advance, or?
Um, she's, has just recently formed the 501(c)(3), so she has a lot on her plate. We were scheduling two or three clinics out at the time. Her next clinic is scheduled for this coming September 2, which is this Sunday.
This Sunday.
To my knowledge, she has not scheduled out beyond that. Has she done? No.
And where is she?
She's based on the west coast. I've not yet nailed her down to ask her what brought her to this neck of the woods. I brought my cat to her clinic in Valparaiso 11 years ago, so she's been in operation for quite some time. It's a family. It is her and her husband, two of her children, and then a staff. And they come to Indiana just about once a month or every 40 days, and they hold these clinics.
Well, I would, I would offer that if you could give us some notice as to when she's going to be in town, we could intercede and provide, work with Janet to provide a meeting with the two entities and see what, what can come of it.
I can certainly provide your folks with an outline and a schedule of events. We'd love to.
Anything else, sir?
If I could add, yeah, I keep in touch with Janet on a regular basis. You probably understand why. But, yes, she puts it on their website once I let her know, so that it's on their website. But the reason why they don't bring it to us is she has another separate low-cost neuter clinic in Kokomo that she runs cats down to, I believe it's every other Wednesday. So that's why she doesn't try to take up those spots that we have.
Okay. And I guess I'm a little confused. We have a lot of feral cats in the community. And she reported how many had been neutered, spayed the last time here. And it was, it was, it was a nice number, but it wasn't a huge number. I would think joining forces would be the way to approach it and then advertise the heck out of it that bring these cats in.
Letting people know that they can be neuter and spayed for $20 should be an incentive for anyone that's feeding cats anyway. But it's, you know, that's a pretty negligible amount of money to have an animal, you know, taken out of the reproduction cycle.
Sure. Well, again, sir, it can't help to sit down and talk the two parties. So let us know, and we'll, we'll see if we can get a meeting set up.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now I would like to open the public hearing for the 2019 budget. Shada, turn the floor over to you.
In your packet, you'll see the notice to taxpayers, which is the same figures that we discussed in our council budget hearing. And essentially, it reads that our total budget estimate is $7,357,100 for 2019. And our estimated maximum funds to be raised is $3,102,121. And then the current tax levy is listed as $2,874,464. So there were no changes or additions to the council budget hearings that we held in July. So that's what these budget numbers were based on. And just so we know, this is just our tax-supported funds and, excuse me, these are all of the funds that are both tax-supported and funded outside of property taxes, with the exception of our utilities. Does not include the utility budgets. Those will come to you in December typically, November, December.
Okay. Any questions, council members? If not, I'll open it up to the floor. Are there any questions from the, from the gallery, from the floor? Okay. With that being the case, I'll close the public hearing.
And then just so you are aware, the actual ordinance will come next month, September meeting for the adoption.
Okay. Before we move over into unfinished old business, we do have some unfinished business that's not here. After the last meeting, I was informed of a procedural error that as the chairman of the council, I have to take the responsibility for. We all should keep in mind, we had an ordinance brought to us by Councilman Fitzwater, and that wasn't on our agenda, wasn't advertised. So the public did not have a chance to come forward and discuss that ordinance. We aired there. I had two parties outside of here mention that to me. I'm not sure they would have been here, but they did mention it to me that we were out of order. With that being said, if there's anyone out there listening who, one of those people who approached me, or anybody else who would like to have that on an agenda to discuss, all they have to do is contact Shada, and we'll get you on the agenda. But I apologize for that, and we should not have had all three votes that night at least. So we, we won't be doing that again. Okay. With that being said, we have some-
Tim, there was some additional unfinished business regarding the request from the shelter for that additional $5,000. I did omit that off of the agenda before you move on to the next item.
It's not on here either?
It's not.
No, I handwrote, I-
You handwrote it?
I handwrote it on Brian's because I totally forgot about that request.
Am I supposed to tell him?
Yes.
You're special. So there's some unfinished business on the agenda.
Thanks, she didn't write it on mine.
Okay. Would you, would you want to tell us?
I ran out of time.
Councilman Goodman, would you want to tell us what that unfinished business was?
They're requesting an increase of $5,000 to their budget from us.
Discussion?
Sure. What's the reason for the increase?
Janet at the la, you weren't here at the last meeting. She had came and presented, they were trying to expand their spay and neutering program. And she had presented, and correct me, council, if I'm wrong on any of this, that they were looking for this additional funding to help offset those costs and kind of focus their efforts on that spay and neuter.
Well, we know a guy that's starting-
Right, I know.
Timely.
And so, and unfortunately, the timing of it came, I mean, we had, had already moved forward with where we were going with our budget and had things kind of there.
Yeah.
And due to timing, we tried to get our special meeting in before tonight's hearing. However, it just, it just didn't work with everybody's schedules. So if the count, if it so pleases the council to increase, we wouldn't be able to do it out of the general, out of their actual line item. I, I could transfer from another line item to that one to increase it, or I could look at one of our other funds if you guys choose to increase that amount.
What's their timeline? You wanted them to-
I, I think she was anticipating for next year's budget is-
So we could table it until we can see if we can get those folks working together.
That's certainly your call.
Anybody want to make that suggestion?
I can see if that was a motion I seconded.
Okay.
That was my thoughts exactly.
There's a motion to table the request for a $5,000 increase to the animal shelter budget by Goodman, seconded by Garrett. Those in favor signify.
How about postponing that table?
Okay. I know you hate that table.
No, that would be the attorney.
Oh. Is he, is he whispering to you again?
If we table, we don't have to bring it up again.
That's right.
Correct.
That's right.
I prefer, I prefer the motion that I seconded.
Table it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Those in favor? Okay. That's unanimous. Okay. Any other unfinished old business that we don't have on our agenda?
Sorry.
That's okay.
How did you think?
Yeah. The next item for old business is the county's request for financial support for the new jail. Most of you were at the dual meeting a few weeks ago out at the fairgrounds. And we had quite a discussion about the, the building of the new jail. And the three different taxes were briefly mentioned. The special low-aid tax and the correctional low-aid tax that the state has established that would allow counties to wrap their arms around some funds that would go directly towards the building of a correctional facility. There would be no splitting out of those low-aid funds to any cities or townships. It'd go directly for that purpose. And those of you who've been aware of that process, I think some of you were at the county's meeting this past week, know that those two taxes were approved by the county council. The, the question at hand for the city is the current public safety low-aid tax. The county is, is suggesting or looking at raising that tax and asking Rochester and Akron and Kiwanah and Fulton to take our share, because that one would be distributed out to everybody, take our share of the increase and give back to them to put towards the building of the correctional facility. Did I explain that right, Jim?
Yes.
Jim's from Akron. So that's, that's what we were asking. If you remember in a meeting, we were asked if we could have an answer by the 21st, which of course the 21st has come and gone. There were lots of reasons why we couldn't get together. So we're bringing it to the floor tonight. With that being said, we have, have several pieces of information that we want to make available to the council. One of them being the blueprint of the Adams County Jail that has been discussed as the pattern-
The model.
The model for the, for our new jail. Shada, do we have that on the, on the board?
Do you want to do that, or did you want to do the video?
Well, okay, before we discuss the, the layout here, there's a, a video that we have that the Adams County folks put out as a press release that's less than a minute, but it's about the new jail, and it's, it's a pretty nice video. I thought you might like to see it, if you can see it.
Yeah, I'll see if I can get it to go full screen. I'm not sure if I can. We'll see. Failed to download faster. Bad guys.
We are in desperate need of an IT person.
Do you download? They have problems with the superior court or circuit court?
Yeah, I never tried to do it through browser.
Oh, there you go. Hold on. Pause. Now we volume. Come on. Seriously. There we go. My sound isn't working. Well, come on, Brian.
Take that one.
Okay, now that we have the sound, and I apparently can't get it to go full screen.
Can you raise the volume?
There we go.
Raise the volume of it?
Just shock that lady.
That's what you get for talking. Well, my speakers aren't working. Okay, now that we have the sound, and I apparently can't get it to go full screen.
Can you raise the volume?
There we go.
Raise the volume of it?
I'm trying.
Just shock that lady.
That's what you get for talking. Well, my speakers aren't working.
Yeah, not 2:13. Right. They did some, they did some.
Okay, essentially what they were saying is, I'll just kind of give a, the, about here, almost, after almost a year and a half of construction, Adams County Law Enforcement Facility is almost open for business. It was a 57,000 square foot facility and started in the summer of '15. The old jail was only able to hold 60 inmates. And I mean, it's comparable to our situation, and our understanding is the county officials like the design of this and the model of this particular facility. And it includes the jail sheriff's office 911, and it will, this new jail now holds, can hold 189 inmates. And it goes through the purchase of it, that they, the jail sits on 14 acres in- Yeah, sits in Decatur, Indiana, which is east of here in Adams County. Now, this will open up. Come on, you know you want to. Technology, it always works when you don't want it to.
If anyone cares to see that video in a better state on your individual computers, you can go to the Adams County New Jail Facility. And that will, that video will come up. Couple of points made that Shada didn't mention there was they paid $1.5 million for the land to put the jail on. They used 14 acres. They were required because of the location to buy 169 acres.
Hello?
Yeah. The auditor said farmers don't like breaking out pieces of property for sale. So we had to buy the whole parcel. So they've got some real estate for sale. They did come in under budget, like three and a half million dollars, and ended up with 189 beds instead of the 213. They are, after a year and a half now, they are utilizing for their personal use two-thirds of that pod system. And if you notice on your print, that pod system takes up roughly one-third of the complex. The other two-thirds are office facilities.
I've got some extra copies on there.
The beauty of the pod system is, like I said, they got 189 beds out of it. The third that they're not using, they're farming out to the federal penitentiary program. And if you work with federal prisoners instead of state, you pick up extra money. It's 54 bucks a head instead of 35. So it's, the auditor told me it is not a profit center by any means, but it's a contribution to their overhead. That is, that is the facility that has been discussed as the Adams County Jail or correctional facility. You wanted to share some numbers with folks?
Sure. As the fiscal officer for the city, anytime you start talking finances, my head always comes to numbers. You guys should know that by now. So we were presented, the county had actually given us the UML report that they received back in, I believe it was June 21st of 2018. So these, what I had presented in your packet were two spreadsheets. One is, and these are all illustrative, and they are based on the numbers from the UML report that the county received regarding a bond payment on a $24 million bond. So what I did is I just took their numbers. Now, we all know income taxes always EBITDA. So there's going to be years that it's going to be higher, years it's going to be lower. So what these are, these are just stagnant numbers based on 2018 income. So this is from the DLGF certified report. This is available on the DLGF website for our income taxes. And if it ever loads. It loaded before the meeting. DLGF is the Department of Local Government Finance. That's, between them and the State Board of Accounts are the two agencies at the state level that we, us, county, all municipal taxing districts, municipalities are required to report to. And so what I did is I took essentially our existing current LIT rates, which is local income tax, and that is our current rates. Good, Brady, come on. For 2018 and showed, split them out by each one of our, why could you not open? And split out for our, each of our taxing districts. So essentially, there's $980,800 that comes into public safety. That's our current public safety lowe tax that we currently receive. Because this jail is only based in public safety. There are additional income taxes that all taxpayers, or that all income earners, I should say, in Fulton County pay. And that is your certified shares, your property tax relief, economic development, and public safety. Those are the four currently right now that everybody who has a job, works in Fulton County pays. So for this particular purpose, because it is just dealing with public safety, I only did an illustrative income, impact statement, which apparently that one's probably not going to load either, for the taxpayer's benefit. But for purposes of this, Fulton County receives 62.62% of the public safety. Rochester receives 31.47. Akron receives 2.82. Kiwanah 2.51. And Fulton 0.58% of the current public safety income tax. Broken out in numbers, respectively, it's 614,185 to Fulton County, 308,690 to Rochester, 27,615 to Akron, 24,605 to Kiwanah, 5,705 to Fulton. Then the next section on, of course, it's not going to work, is the new taxes that were just passed by the county last week. So these taxes will not actually take effect until January 1st. All income taxes based on, they have to collect the tax, so they'll collect all of the tax in 2019 out of all of our paychecks, and then come 2020 is when they will actually release those to the county for payment. Or so they'll submit those disbursements to the county in 2020. Those will total, if based upon this year's, again, illustrative information, this year's income, respectively, the special purpose tax, they'll receive $980,800. And then for the correctional rate, they will receive $784,640 for a total of just over 1.7 million, just out of those two new taxes that they've imposed. So if you slide on over to the, on the spreadsheet, Tina?
No.
If you wouldn't mind coming up here and grab some of these sheets.
No, I've got plenty of copies if you want to.
If you've got extra copies, this sheet, anybody in the audience would like to have it, it's a very significant sheet.
There, I've got Tina, she's on it, thank you.
Okay.
Excuse me, Shada. Just maybe I'll have it. Dennis? Do you know how to operate that? He's an IT guy.
Good luck. I'm a former IT girl, but sometimes it doesn't always work. It's on my job.
Anyone who would capture one of these spreadsheets, if they want to take it home and peruse it, across the top, Shada has different income levels.
Well, I'm not, I'm not to that one yet.
Okay.
I'm on this one right now.
Okay.
Let's finish with this one and then we'll jump to the other one.
Don't do overload on us.
Hang in there with me.
Don't do overload.
Because the county has only talked about two potential increases. One of them being 0.2% to the public safety and the other being 0.3%. What I did on my spreadsheet was, is I, for, again, because I was trying to keep this simple and just use the numbers and make it make sense. The additional public safety of a 0.2% increase would generate a total of $784,640. There we go.
And that's just the increase that, yes?
Correct. So that would be this one right here in the blue. Oh, no, that's fine. Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Thanks, Dennis.
I gave up my IT hat 10 years ago. Okay, the, so here in the blue, this is the increase.
Thanks, John.
What?
Thanks, John.
Yeah, thanks, John. The additional public safety at 0.2%. This is the total additional revenue, so 784,640. And then Fulton County would receive themselves proper, 491,342. Rochester would receive 246,926. Akron 22,127. Kiwanah 19,694. And Fulton 4551. So with that, over here to the far right, I just did totals for everything with a 0.2% increase. So total Fulton County, and this includes the current public safety that we currently have, is 2,379,625. Rochester, and this is, I guess I should go back here to the beginning. I broke this down in years of the bond. So I was mimicking everything after the bond. So this is a two-year bond. Actually, I believe this breaks up to 18 years. But, so each year, so that's what the line is over there to the left. So come on over this way. So for each year, Akron, Rochester, Fulton, Kiwanah, none of us get an increase the first two years because there's no, without doing the public safety increase. Or, yes, if we don't do it until 2021, if we were to increase our public safety 2021. So our state stagnant, you get to 2021, and suddenly now, and you look at Fulton County, they get 2,870,967. Rochester would get 555,616, 49,742, 44,299, and 10,256. Now, with just the two taxes that the county imposed last week, or adopted last week, with the numbers being stagnant, they are already going to generate $1,765,440 with just those two taxes. Okay? And you come down here to the illustrative, and I say illustrative, again, this is all the illustrative, nothing has been adopted, nothing has been passed. But UML had presented them with a bond payment on a $24 million bond of roughly 1.877 for the first year, and it fluctuates, just like if you have a mortgage at home or you have a credit card payment, it'll go up and down based on your interest. Well, municipal bonds kind of work that way as well. Municipal bonds, your interest rate will fluctuate a little bit based on your bond market at the time of entering into the bond. So they have illustratively said 1.877, 1.882, 1.879. So this column right here is just what the illustrative bond payment is. If you look at the illustrative total bond revenue, the first two years, Fulton County would receive 2.3 million without a bond payment. Now, they do have, you know, they'll have some expenses with this particular project upfront. Obviously, they're going to have some design expenses for the design of the jail, they're going to have some professional service fees, things like that. Then, starting in 2021, the impact would be at that point, the bond starts, and so if they receive $2,379,625, it leaves them, and they pay the $1,877, they still have $502,625 left over. And I know that, my understanding is their public safety they currently receive, I'm sure they already have that allocated currently to be spent with their public safety because that can only be used for their sheriff, their 911, and EMS. Right, Tom?
Correct.
Correct?
Mm-hmm.
So that would, that would give them about $100,000 short of what they typically, right now, what they would get to make that bond payment. So if you come down on what they have, so what I did is then I took that and I said, okay, so if we go with a bond payment with the 0.2% public safety increase, what does that look like? Well, what that looks like is, just for Fulton County, the difference would be if they increase the public safety, just them alone, not including Akron, Fulton, Rochester, Kiwanah, they would have a difference of 993,967 after the bond payment. And then I did it again, I did the same thing for the 0.3% and showed that they would have a revenue, an additional revenue of 1.2 million after the bond payment. So again, it's just taking their information that they provided to us and just breaking it out in kind of a year-by-year snapshot and including our revenues because, you know, the city was tasked with, we would like to, we would like you to contribute. Now, with the two taxes that they've already implemented, I cannot preface enough that everybody who lives and works in Fulton County pays this, including those who live in the city and the mid-towns. The public safety does get disseminated out so that the city and the towns all benefit from that public safety tax. But we do not benefit from the other two. And then I just put my little disclaimer on there that the illustrative data was obtained from the June 21st, 18 financial illustration. Revenue amounts were listed on the 2018 DLGF LIT report, certified report. The LIT rates do not include the certified shares, economic development, property tax relief, which total 1.68% of your income tax right now. And it is not stationary from year to year. It can increase and decrease depending on several factors, but it is based solely on income tax. Now, you know, what the county decides to do with their plan is to stem.
Shada, excuse me, if you work outside of Fulton County, I'm sure somebody's thinking this, if you work outside of Fulton County, are you exempt from that?
No, you still, you pay Fulton County income tax.
Okay.
You're not exempt today. We have heard that there's legislation afoot that could change that. That could be a factor in the future. We don't know that that will be the case.
Hey, Dennis, you want to look at that other spreadsheet? Then I don't have to.
The thing, cutting to the chase and rolling figures, do we come up short on a $1.8 million a year payment for a new $24 million facility with the two taxes that have already been implemented? Yes. But about $100,000 short, not $900,000 short. We're just not certain in looking at this that that public safety lowe tax that we currently have needs to be raised.
Thank you.
Would we like to say, yes, we'll take our shares and run? That would be great. We've got lots of things we could use it for. But I'm not convinced it needs to be raised at this point. I'm also not convinced, and Councilman Smith, I think you've had some conversations with folks too, I'm not sure that we're looking at a $24 million investment. Is that some of the feeling you're getting?
Yes, I was told, I think it aired on the radio, that they've actually already considered cutting it down to something like 173, 175 beds, which obviously would cut some on that total. And, yes, I don't think they have the scope decided in any stretch of the imagination. I don't even know that the county council has seen all the numbers. I'm not sure. But certainly, they have not voted on anything, have not decided anything, have not determined even the location of the jail. I know they're still giving some conversation and we have provided other data for the plan that we were talking about, but they're still yet to determine where that location's going to be. So I didn't get the, I talked to several county council people, not really talked to commissioners, but I get the sense that they haven't come close to having the scope identified for what they're going to be doing yet.
I don't even know that the county council has seen all the numbers, I'm not sure. But certainly, they have not voted on anything, have not decided anything, have not determined even the location of the jail. I know they're still giving some conversation, and, uh, we have provided other data for the plan that we were talking about, but, um, they're still yet to determine where that location's going to be. So I didn't get the, I talked to several county council people, not really talked to commissioners, but I, uh, I get the sense that they haven't come close to having the scope identified for what they're going to be doing yet, you know?
I concur, I've had a couple of conversations with council folks too, and they're still trying to gather information to, wouldn't you say that's an accurate statement, to come to a, a plan?
Yes, definitely. Um, and I, in one of the conversations, I heard they even are talking about reconfiguring some of that office space in regards to classrooms. I think they'd like to see, and I know you don't have the benefit of saying this, but I, I think they kind of think they want to see more classroom space in here as opposed to over there, uh, which I don't think that changes cost numbers too much, I wouldn't think, but, well, the design is still undetermined.
The Decatur folks, this layout, they build a complex, they've got several office folks in this facility also. Uh, I'm not sure we, we know what, uh, will be housed in this, in this type of facility. Right, uh, to be determined.
Ted, I'll sit down, you want me to go over the taxpayer impact, and then you guys can finish your discussion?
Can you do the video? Real quick, it's only a minute. Dennis, is Dennis still air?
Dennis would have to look at my speakers and figure out why they're not working, because they're plugged in.
Okay.
So...
All right, okay.
Um, I'm going to finish...
That's fine.
My spreadsheet, and then let you guys finish your discussion, and then you can go into the, the engineering for the property.
Okay, yep.
Um, I, I also took the numbers and did a taxpayer impact, because obviously, our job is to be fiducially responsible to the taxpayers. Um, with, if you, and I broke it down into, and again, this is illustrative data from the county's information, the, I did 15,000, 25,000, so I did $10,000 increments from 15,000 up to 105. Right now, currently, we have a tax, income tax rate of 1.93 percent. Um, so if you are a person who earns $15,000 a year, you pay $289.50 a year for your income taxes. Uh, if you're a $55,000 earner, you pay $1,061.50. If you're blessed enough to be a $105,000 earner, you pay $2,026.50. So you can see clearly, that obviously, the higher your income, the more you're going to pay. Again, I focused only on the .2 and the .3 percent increase that the county has discussed with us, and, um, if they implement the public safety, uh, what I did, I had this done before last week, so what I did is, the what's in blue is what they enacted last week, and what is in red is what we are discussing tonight, as far as what would impact the city and the towns. So if they were to implement a .2 percent, the public safety additional, uh, you would be paying a total of 2.58 percent. So for an income earner at 15,000, you're paying $387 a year. If you are an income earner at 55,000, you're going to be paying $1,419. So you're going to be paying, uh, not quite $400 more a year. Um, if you're a $105,000 earner, you're going to be paying $2,709. Uh, now, obviously, you could just deduct what's in red, subtract that off, so if I make a 55,000, I would take, I would actually, if they, we do not do the .2 percent increase, then I would take $110 off of that, so I would be sitting at, uh, $1,309 a year that I would be paying. Um, if, and then you jump down in the next section, um, you may not be able to see it back there very well, because it's slow enough on the screen, the .3 percent increase takes you up to a total of a 2.68 percent, um, income tax. So for the, for, if I'm a $15,000 income earner, I'm paying $402 a year. If I'm a $55,000 earner, I'm paying $1,0474. If I'm $105,000, I'm paying $2,0814. And again, you can, if we can subtract out the red, um, if nothing is increased in the public safety sector, or area, then I would be at, uh, $362. I would be at, at 55,000, I'd be 165 less. Man, I was thinking, do you use my brain for this? Um, so I would be looking at 13, oh, what, a little over 1,300? Um, and then 315 out of the 218, so I'd be looking at 2699. Um, so there's kind of the, the impact to the taxpayer, and again, that was one of those things that, um...
I'm really sorry if this is a dumb question, but is this addition to what we're already paying?
Yes, the, the top, the top one is what we currently pay. These down here, uh, the one in blue, that was just passed last week, so that will be coming out of your paychecks next year.
Now, when we say that will be paid, the 200, um, say, for example, the 105, the 210?
Uh-huh.
So not the 2,700 plus what we have prepared?
Right, right, if we, you can deduct that 210 off of that 2,709, because the red has not been passed yet, so we will not be paying that increase yet.
Okay.
I just, I had put this together before last week, and it was one of those, I debated on taking it out, putting it in, and I was trying to keep this simple. So what, what is in red is the public safety increase that has not been passed. So the public safety increase is, has not been passed, is not implemented yet, um, so that would be $210 that you would not be paying if you're a $105,000 income earner.
Yeah, this, this sheet represents all of the local income taxes that not only do we currently have, but the two special ones that were just enacted, that are, that are now permanently added to this list, and then the, the, uh, public safety LOAT tax that we have on here, that we have been paying on, as Shota mentions in the, in the red color, is the increase, if, if, if we, if the county votes on making an increase to that tax.
So we, the blue has been added?
Yes.
And now we're going to add the red?
Well, it's being contemplated by the county to increase that and add to the jail, to the jail fund.
We're going to increase again?
Yes, yes, to make that. Now, we would keep our current distribution, the blue, but the new increase, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the, the black up here, we keep the current money, but the increase to it, the county's asking that we hand over to them for the jail. Because the state requires, when you implement a LOAT tax, that the municipalities and the county get portions of it, based on population. So we each get a distribution, and the county's saying, please waive that, give it to us so that we can put it in the jail fund. Is that clear as mud? Okay. I, I would, I would recommend anyone who is interested in looking how it affects individuals, grab this sheet. Shota's done a great job of laying it all out.
Or, I could email it, too.
Any questions, folks, for Shota on, on her spreadsheets? Okay, the other, the other thing that, uh, transpired at that meeting a few weeks ago, those of you who were there, as we were wrapping it up, and the discussion of the location for the new jail came up, we made the, uh, offer, and again, it was just an offer pending council approval, and you have not made an approval of this, but there was an offer of the, uh...
Remember that your sticker?
What, what did my sticker say?
Idea.
Idea? Offer? Idea? Okay.
We have an offer idea.
Idea.
Idea. That's correct. It was an idea, yeah, sorry, sorry. I left that hat at home. It was an idea, it was a suggestion that, uh, that 22 acres out next to the waste treatment plant that, uh, that border, that, uh, front of, fronting Monticello Road, and you can see the 31 bypass from it, could possibly be utilized to build this, this facility. Uh, if you remember, the Decatur, the facility is built on 14 acres. Uh, I was asked by Councilman Lewis to, uh, show him that acreage the very next day after that meeting.
Commissioner Lewis?
Commissioner Lewis, what did I say? Councilman? Commissioner Lewis, pardon me, and, uh, he and Billy Morris met me out there. Billy is on the, uh, the jail site selection committee, along with Commissioner Lewis and Sheriff Sailors. And I showed them the 22 acres, which we have soybeans growing on right now, and, okay, they were going to evaluate it, find, we looked at the fact that the utilities are right there, and all in all, you know, we made a nice offer to them for a buck, something of that nature. They, they'd save about $4 million right off the top with the utilities and everything being right there. Uh, they were going to evaluate it and let us know. I have not received anything official back from that evaluation. I did hear some things on the radio about some negatives to it, but we had also gone ahead, uh, right after suggesting the idea, council, the idea, we went ahead and got ahold of Lawson Fisher and Associates, who are the folks, the engineering folks, who did all the evaluation and processing of the dam redevelopment out there. And we chose them because we've had no dealings with them, the county's really had no dealings with them, and they were very knowledgeable in our floodplain areas and everything of that nature here with the community. They did a desk audit of our acreage out there, and you've got a report of their desk audit. Now, let me reemphasize, it was a desk audit, cost us $1,500, a full-fledged audit's about five or six grand, so we did a desk audit, and they concluded that, uh, the wet plains area is not a problem, uh, the creek that runs out there, uh, just north of that area, it was not a problem. Uh, about 15 and a half acres of that 22 acres would be very satisfactory for a building, it's sandy property and such, and, uh, would take a, uh, an average amount of fill. The other thing we heard was it was pretty low and it would take a lot of fill dirt, that's not what this report says, so I give you a copy of this report for your consideration.
And we also have fill, the, the dirt to throw in?
Oh, yeah, if we need any fill, we've got, uh, fields of fill dirt out there that was left over from a pilot project that we inherited. Uh, so it still looks like a viable spot to me, but we have not had anything back, any feedback from the county, and hopefully, we will get that. I have not provided this to them, I will get a copy to Commissioner Lewis and to Council President Phil O'Leary. Lot of information thrown out tonight, uh, we still have a lot of, uh, information, I think, to collect from the county. Councilman Smith, uh, you and I kicked it around a little bit as far as making our decision. Now, I know the county wanted it, or Commissioner Lewis wanted us to have an answer by the 21st, but I'm not sure that's a factor anymore, are you?
I, I don't think it is. I can, I certainly sympathize with the commissioners, they, and if the tables were turned and, and we received the non-compliance letters they've, uh, that they have received on the jail, I understand their need to move forward, which I think they did a really good job with that first step of raising those, uh, two taxes they did the other night. But, uh, as far as the lit money is concerned, I personally just don't see why we need to make that decision tonight. We, we don't have, uh, a scope of the job, we don't have, uh, much detail at all, I mean, we know the model they want to do, uh, but we don't know size, we don't know scope, we don't know, uh, location or anything else, nor does the council, they haven't decided on what they're doing. Till we have that information, I don't know, uh, why we would need to decide now on, uh, on LOAT funds at this point in time.
I, you know, I agree, I think a decision at this time with all of the factors still to be answered, uh, one important one being, we may not be talking about $24 million, maybe something south of that.
I think they've already gone south of that, because of mentioning the fact that they're probably reducing beds down into the 170, 112. That's, that's considerable reduction.
Uh, yeah, a decision, it's up to you folks, but a decision to open up, uh, our LOAT increases that we'd receive if they increased the tax, I think it's arbitrary right now, uh, until that figure is, they may not need that tax. They may have all the money they need right now with what they've already captured, it's certainly close. I would have to agree with you, what, you, the rest of the council, any thoughts?
When would they have to implement that, I guess, then, to receive it?
For the public safety increase?
Yeah.
Honestly, they, because you capture it the year ahead of dispersment, uh, if the bond doesn't start repayment until 2021, they, 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 based on the numbers, they should, they could wait to implement it, um, either next year or 2020, um, because the first bond payment isn't due, um, I believe it wasn't due until June or July of 2021, um, and because they're going to capture roughly $5 million these first two years, I would think they would have enough that they would be able to make that first bond payment the first year. So even if they didn't implement it until 2020 and become effective 2021 or 2022, um, based on just numbers alone, not based on what other, other extenuating or circumstances surround their decisions, um, you know, they would have enough to make that first bond payment, first two bond payments.
Yeah, the other piece we haven't said anything about, and, Andy and Ryan might be able to shed more light on this, there is going to be a change in the judicial system in Fulton County, uh, come January 1, and there is talk about the use of the jail maybe changing. I, I certainly don't know any detail about that, but...
The impact of the numbers, yeah.
There's been conversation about maybe some alternatives to jailing everybody, so our need might go down.
Well, it's certainly true that once we implement this, you don't get it back, I mean, it's there.
Right, and you're locking it up for 20 years.
Yeah. And one thing too, Ted, to make sure the public understands as well, is the correctional rate, and correct me if I'm wrong, council, uh, does, by state law, actually expires after 20 years. So by default, that particular tax will drop off, um, the tax roll off of income taxes after 20 years.
But not our public safety LOAT would, wouldn't drop off.
No, no, just the correctional.
But that's why, that's why the county council needed tax.
Correct.
Because the way they did, they'd get that...
Correct. Because they, yeah, they, they were given a timeline by the state legislatures to say, you need to implement this, so they were kind of caught with that, with those two taxes, correct.
So they needed to do that.
Right. And again, and those, you know, they capture all, 100% of the revenue, and they keep 100% of it, so there's no, um, we don't have to muddy the waters on those.
Right, just for that purpose of the jail.
Correct.
Mayor, if you need a motion, I, I would, um, and Andy, you tell me if I want table to postpone, or, uh, or just, if we're going to not do anything, does it die for a lack of a motion?
You never, you never need to make a negative motion.
Okay.
So, I mean, if your intent is not to make any changes at this time, you don't need to make any.
And we don't need to make a motion.
No one needs to make any motion, by the way I see it, and, and, and just, if you're bringing it up at a future meeting, make sure you make a request that you got on your agenda.
Uh, I'd like to see us not take action on, uh, raising the LOAT tax at this time.
Well, we wouldn't be raising it, we wouldn't, I mean, giving a portion, I mean, it's not in our power to raise it, I think.
Right.
I feel the same way, Marty, too.
Yeah, I agree as well.
General consensus? It's water? Okay, so be it. Thank you.
Ted, did you want to open the floor to bring in other questions?
Yeah, we can do that. While we're still on the subject, I, we have a lot of people here gathered, and I assume they've gathered for this... they've gathered for this subject. Anybody who would like to share their thoughts from the council's future consideration on the subject? Anyone? Oh, Figleal?
I would just like to mention, and I'm speaking strictly as-
Would you identify yourself for the record, please? Identify yourself for the record, please.
Rick Figleal. I, I'm speaking as Rick Figleal, not as a member of city government, not under anyone's influence, but I've talked to a lot of people on this subject. There are a lot of questions out there. How do we know what tax rate we need when we don't know what we're going to build? Why are we in such a hurry to do this? Why don't we wait till after the election? Those kind of questions need to be answered before you people can possibly make that decision as to what to do on this tax rate.
Okay.
And for some reason, we don't seem to be getting those answers. The general consensus is we're going after as much as we can get, and we'll figure out what to do with it after we get it. I don't think you want to be any part of that.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Moving right along, new business. Jim Ewen, Lake Manito Association suggested improvement for the ditch between Lakeshore Drive and Ewing Road for fish catchery beds. There he is, I was trying to pick you out in the audience, I couldn't find you.
You're probably hiding back there.
I'm Jim Ewen, I'm with the Lake Manito Association Secretary this year. About seven weeks ago, I called Mayor Ted and asked what's the possibility of filling in the race, the ditch, open ditch between Ewing Road and Lakeshore Drive. There are several problems with the race. When I was a cop here, I worked two rollovers into the ditch and one on the other side. We can't do anything about that because it goes down into Mill Creek, but we can certainly do something about the, the open ditch side. It's an expense to the city. You've got to go mow up the hill, back up, go up, down, up, down, all the way through it. I wouldn't want to be the guy running the mower. And not only that, it's not very pretty. And I asked Mayor Ted what would be the possibility of filling it in. He said he would love to, however, DNR pretty much told him couldn't be done. I asked him, could I talk with DNR and see what their problem is? I've talked to several DNR offices down Indy, finally got the, the one that has the say-so over it. It's a lady named Marquita Stefferson, the head of the Technical Services Division. Told her what I was going to ask about, and she said, wait a minute, first of all, we have no jurisdiction over that, that's owned by the city. And she said, if you want help with your locals, let me know. I said, what do you mean, who are our locals? And they, she said, you people, the city owns that. She said, there's a website that she gave me, and she can also help to assist in whatever need to be done. I took a look, she sent that website to me, and I took a look at that, and I saw in it down in the bottom corner that it showed that Gary Madlin was the floodplain coordinator, and the, that ditch is in the floodplain. Gave Gary a call, said, I don't care what you do with it. He said, you can fill it in, but I would ask one thing, that you not make it crowned so the water runs off onto both streets, make it level or slightly indented. And he said, that'll fit in real well with his floodplain plan. And he said, however, call Casey Coles, get her blessing. Called Casey, and she said, I have absolutely no problem with it, it's a safety issue that can be addressed easily. And said, no, one thing is to keep Don Town in the picture. So, I called Don Town. He's 100% behind it. He said, as a matter of fact, I've got women who are wanting me to clear out the thicket on the north side of Ewing Road. I think the garden club or somebody built a little area in their picnic area or butterfly garden or something. And he didn't say it was them, but he said, I guess I'm going to have to take bushes out and shrubs out. And he said, do you want those trees taken out that are in the race? And I said, no, we're not interested in removal of trees, just, could we open it up to our local contractors to put clean fill in there, start at one end and work our way to the other? It's not going to be a one-year project, it might be a several-year project, but specify that has to be good clean fill going in there. And then ultimately, we'd have a park, a place for picnic tables, flowers, all sorts of things. It's one of the gateways to the lake, kind of a gateway to Rochester, and we'd like to beautify that. That's kind of the goals of the Lake Association, first, of course, is clean up the lake, and second, is to beautify the surrounding areas. So, I guess I'm asking for your support, can this be done? And I, this is just throwing it against the wall and see what sticks. There are a lot of things that have to be answered, posting, policing to make sure nobody dumped lumber in it, or stumps, or what have you, has to be good clean fill. The lady at DNR said, rocks, stones, dirt, bricks, you know, the hard stuff. She said, I said, what's the problem with asphalt? And she said, well, it comes out of the earth, doesn't it? Meaning the soil, the oil to make asphalt. I think we would have to get a clarification on that. But everybody seems to be in favor of it, and at this point, I'm asking, what's your opinion, and where do we go from here if we can?
My response to you on that, my resource was Mr. David Smith with the DNR, who was in charge of the dam and spillway projects. That is his bellyweight. I would like to get Marquita and David together and get them on the same page, because he said that is an active, those are spillways that are part of the dam protection flood process, and that we could not do anything with them other than maintain them. And he told us how to do that, we could mow them and such. But I think we need to get the two DNR heads together. This is kind of like getting your taxes audited, and one auditor tells you one thing, and another one tells you something else. But like I say, this guy lives that world. We probably, if you could give me her name and contact number, I would try to get those two together and see what, what the common denominator comes out to be, Jim. Because when we fill it all in and do all of this stuff, they don't come to the Lake Manito Association, they come to the mayor's office. So, I want to make sure we're not broaching something there. He came and was very explicit at our park board meeting.
Yeah, he was, and I can actually, I'll give you a copy of this. This was the DNR's, basically what he presented to our park board, because they wanted to do some things in that dam spillway area where the beach and that is, and they frowned upon some of that. And it's simply because that dam will always be a high-hazard dam, they will never get, we will never be able to get away from that designation, simply because of the trajectory of, if there's ever a catastrophic event, failure, things like that where that dam fails in some capacity. The trajectory of the flooding and the impact to life and damage to property is significant. So, they're, the, the folks that actually maintain that area with the dam may have a different perspective than the other folks at the DNR, because they're not looking at it in the same manner. But I know when he came, they, if it, if the dam floods, essentially if those fronts go away where the creek comes through, floods, and it runs over Ewing Road, there's the possibility that that additional ditch right there would catch any overflow before it would actually flood any of those homes. So, I think Ted's right, I think we would want to make sure we get those two involved and have a conversation to make sure that everybody is in agreeance or not, and before we would ever commit to something like that.
Broach that, yes.
Because, you know, the last thing we want is for there to be a failure, and then we end up with flooded houses. That it could have been prevented.
She talked about that possibility, but she said that is not a possibility because of the difference in elevation. Should the dam fail, it would be a problem, you know, we heard it years ago, it's going to wipe out the hospital and do this and do that.
You'll see by the maps, it's very clear on the maps. I, I don't, I don't-
There'd be some lakefront property at the hospital if it had.
But I, I don't want to, to be disparaging to her knowledge, but the flood maps are very evident that she would not be accurate in that statement.
Again, I would have no problem sitting down, we got the two of these folks together, but it seems like there's, there's some opposing views within the DNR apparently.
What would be your attitude toward it if she convinces him that there's no safety factor?
A letter from Mr. Smith clarifying the situation, because he was the one who was pretty adamant about it.
Okay.
I, I would say we would have to have some documentation for sure, especially because of that dam. That, that's our biggest challenge, is the dam. And the, the other area on the side, on the north side they're viewing, there's very little that we can do there, you know, we cannot remove those trees, we can't touch any of that stuff, because the minute you do, then floodplain change, then that changes the flooding if there is ever an event in that case.
I think Don Town's planning on doing that.
So.
Already, oh boy. You better tread lightly, you better talk to these people who are there with the dam.
Yeah, because we can't even put a footbridge in. We, our park board wanted to put a footbridge across that creek, and the DNR frowned upon that unless it was so far down the creek. But yeah, we're not to remove any of those trees or do anything.
Okay. I'll make sure.
Chief Butler, you've got some information on that too with the, don't you have some information too with the, the-
Just when I was there talking to him, the Army Corps of Engineers and this last group was there and said, you know, really, 100-year floodplain and all that was incorporated is the information I received from that gentleman, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and with shot, with the footbridge, I heard, we couldn't do anything, they didn't want anyone on the bridge or supposed to be sign, or on the dam, there's signs posted to stay off.
Yeah, and those floodplain areas were sacred.
That's not-
But if she would get with, that, if Mr. Smith, and Mr. Smith sends us a letter as such, then we've got something on the record.
Is he in this?
He's the one who put that report.
I just looked through there, I thought his information was in there, but it's not. I can get it to you.
Can you get that?
Okay.
I thought he had put it on there, but he did not.
Okay. Gary Madlin, being the floodplain coordinator, said it certainly was not a problem, so, you know.
DNR trumps that.
Could be.
Oh, I can tell you.
And like I said, and you'll see the maps, they're in there as far as the trajectory of if it floods. It's, it's in red.
It was on her website here too, but she said it makes no difference, so that's what I'm going by.
Yeah, okay.
We'll work on it, thanks.
All right, no problem. Thank you. Okay.
Ordinances and resolutions, we have none. Department reports, Chief Butler, you're up.
Good evening, I'm going to share the copy of my report for July.
Good evening, Tom.
Structure fires, City 1, 2 in Rochester Township, vehicle fires, 3 in Rochester Township, mutual aids, 2 in Liberty, 1 in Union Township, auto fire alarms, 1 in the city, rescue, 1 in Mentone. Accidents, 4 in the city, 1 in Newcastle, 3 in Rochester, 2 in Richland. Medical assists, 15 in the city, 7 in Rochester Township, 2 in Richland Township, 1 in Newcastle Township, we drove the ambulance back to the facility 4 times. CO check, 1 in the city, service calls, 1 in the city, 1 in Rochester Township, council calls, 1 in the city, 1 Rochester Township, 1 Union Township, 1 Abenabi Township, for a total of 53 calls and 1 drill. Also updated, the 2 new hires we had presented through the Board of Works, both of their packets are down at per pending approval for acceptance in the program. The next step then is they will come in process with Carolyn and then get a start date. Pending your questions, that concludes my report.
Anything for Tom?
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Chief Schatz?
For the month of July, we had a total of 12 accidents, 2 of those were personal injury. We issued 74 total warnings, 3 of those were for city ordinances. There were a total of 109 offenses, 41 of those were traffic, 65 criminal, 3 juvenile. There were a total of 68 K S reports, 785 calls for service, 33 lockouts, 15 towed vehicles, and 33 people incarcerated. And then you have the crimes those people were lodged for.
Okay, any, any questions for Chief Schatz?
The methamphetamine, is that still that, it's not a manufacturing problem, it's-
No, it's just the possession problem.
True possession problem.
Yep, we're not seeing the meth labs, we're seeing plenty of meth though. That doesn't seem to be going away.
Anything else for Chief? Thanks, Andy.
Thanks.
Randy Williams, Stormwater Projects.
Fourth Street, they implemented a de-watering, they put in a de-watering system on the street to try and get the groundwater lowered. And so, while it's running, they moved over to the west side of Ohio Street, just north of Fifth. Because the storm sewer splits there, so they're going to start laying that leg. They started that this morning. The LED lighting, Duke has started installing it on the 14th of August, and it should be done within the next couple of weeks. That's the citywide LEDs. Seventh Street and Madison Parking Lot, we got Donahue Engineering's working on a French drain layout so that we can present it to the drainage board, so we can finish that project. Then the generator, Core Mechanical was in today, and they're working on connecting the gas meter to it and changing out the regulators in the building. The next thing we're going to do, they'll do is run down a pre-start checklist, and then we're going to load test it, and-
And if I may interject there, there's been a lot of upgrade and along with this to our electrical setup back here in the back, and haven't you noticed how quiet it is? The infamous hum is gone. And we did that just for RTC, because we know it drove you folks nuts with your equipment and such, but it's gone. We've gotten that all upgraded now.
That's all I got.
Okay. Any questions for Randy? How's Mr. Peavy doing? Have you heard anything?
I don't have heard anything.
All right, thank you. Okay, the, I mentioned the LED lights, as Randy mentioned, they're about half completed throughout the community, and I don't know if any of you've seen them, but boy, do they make a difference.
They're really nice.
We do, we met, Harry was part of that meeting we met this afternoon with the young engineer from Duke, Sam Switzer? Schweitzer? Never get that last name correct. Anyway, we are looking at about 18 lights for downtown that are of a decorative style that will replace all the steel pole lights down, down on Main Street, so those will be very nice also. Okay, Lenny, Street Department, and if you would too, Mason, since Mason's not here, kind of give us a rundown on the park board meeting. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Don Town had contacted me about some areas that were conflicting with the bus drivers, so we trimmed back the following areas, West 12th Street and Fulton Avenue, west of the stop sign, 18th and Bancroft, northwest side- stop sign, 18th and Bancroft, northwest side, Road Street, the west side of it, the alley in between 9th and 10th and Pontiac, the east-west alley was grown over, so we cut that back as well. We've been chipping brush, mowing our rightaways. We fixed holes that developed at 6th and Madison, it was just a clay tile that cracked and developed a sinkhole in the road. Third and Fourth and Clay, they had bored through our storm drain line that runs down the middle of Third and Fourth and Clay. We patched that up with a couple of verco's and some PVC pipe. Eighth and Franklin, we dug it up, it developed, seen that it was a telephone pole that had been decayed and broke off and buried. 13th and, 15th and Pontiac, by the manhole on the east side, it was a line that they'd stubbed out, clay tile, and they tried to plug it up and didn't get the job done, and it developed a sinkhole in the ground, so we got that patched up and fixed. Had a tree come down Saturday, the 11th, at 417 West Seventh Street. We came in and removed it and put it in the vacant lot until Monday, and then we addressed it and got it hauled away. That was a tree that had been marked to take down by the tree board and it has been since taken down. Another one was at 10th and Park Street. That was 3:30 in the morning Monday, not a very good way to start the week out, but it was a property, it was not in our rightaway, but it fell across upon the Park Street, so we came with our loader and moved it around and took care of it that day. We've been sweeping the streets, picking up bags of yard debris, patching holes, been working on missing and faded street signs.
Yeah, do you have any idea how many street signs we've replaced? Because I've noticed it's a bunch.
About $900 worth. I would say probably about a good 30 to 40 signs or more. We graded and stoned an alley between Bancroft and College, 13th and 14th, north-south alley, and we put millings in the alleys. Since Mason ain't here, I'll touch on some of his stuff for the park. We've been mowing the grass, cleaning the restrooms daily and removed the balance apparatus as it was rotted at the bottom and the top. The street department teamed up with the park and hauled dirt to the driving range. Got rid of some tires on tire cleanup day behind the maintenance shed. Service the new tractor, power washed the basketball court at Fancler Park, painted the door and the exterior of the bathroom at the Fancler Park. And I got quotes on trimming up the city park from a couple of our contractors.
Okay. Any word from me and B as to when the ADA portion of our disco, of course, will be?
I haven't heard anything from them yet.
Okay, they probably have that the last on our of their list.
Probably. That's probably gonna be one of the last things, yes.
Very busy right now. Along with that, I had a request, Lenny, that I forget to mention to you every once in a while, the picnic tables out at the beach, can we take one table, just one table's all I was asked, and make it wheelchair accessible, like on the end of it, make sure that a wheelchair could get up?
We can. Yep.
Appreciate that, and so would the gentleman who asked me about it.
We'll put it, put it nearest to the sidewalk and that way it could just wheel right up to it.
He lives right there in the trailer court, he likes to go down there and sit at tables and watch, watch that, so.
Yep, I'll get on that for sure.
Thank you, thank you, that'd be appreciated. Anything else, Lenny?
That's all I got.
Any questions for Lenny?
I do not question, but with that, the tree you said, you said you trimmed, could you give that list to me, I can make sure we get the tree board, just in case there's some overlap with any ones that were contracted.
Okay, sure.
That one 417 West Seventh, so you said that.
Yeah.
Do it on the list, but.
That tree's gone.
Well, we need to make sure that the contractor doesn't charge us for it, because that's been.
No, they took it down, we didn't, the whole tree didn't fall, it was just the limb.
And then they took it down.
And then they took the tree down.
Ryan, I think Jim was on that, and I think he was involved, but you should have Lenny's report that has the list there at the top.
Okay.
Then you can confirm that, but I think.
But I know that same contractor that's trying to bill us for that tree, is trying to bill us for the one on between Seventh and Eighth, and that ain't even taken down yet. So, might want to get with them.
Okay.
Anything else?
We meet on the first Thursday, so if you're available.
I'll get you a list.
I appreciate it.
Thanks, Lenny.
You can always run back and forth, because a lot of times we gotta order me.
What happened just there? Thank you, Lenny. You were halfway down the aisle before I called your name.
Usually you skip me. Good evening.
He'd be guessing.
In our lab, we had normal plant testing, but we just submitted our EPA, QA, QC testing results. That's our testing we do every year in our lab to make sure our tests are certified and our lab tests are certified, that way we can get in compliance. We just finished our LAO quarterly testing, and also at that same time, we did our annual metal testing on LAO for the year. We just finished up our annual wet testing, which is our toxicity test. Basically, they take our samples and they put it in with tadpoles and water fleas to make sure they survive. So, that was the test last year that we failed and had to redo, so hoping for good results here.
You know the big goldfish that Warren used to have in the tank down there?
Correct.
Noticed that in your office the other day, those are gone. Did we have the fish fry or what?
You can say that.
They were huge.
They're still there, there's about eight, we've been trying to give some away because they're starting to get too big.
Where are they?
They're in my office.
Really?
Yeah. In a 50-gallon tank.
Okay.
They're getting big.
They're hiding, Ted.
They're the biggest goldfish I have ever seen.
Well, are they actual, that's what my question, are they actual goldfish or are they a koi?
They're a kind of a breed of, I think.
You need to have an open house and show the kids what happens when you throw your goldfish in the sewer.
And we actually put our effluent.
Don't do that.
We actually put our effluent water in there, so it's kind of a test for us in-house to see if our fish survive and everything, so.
So it's been pretty good.
The ones you have, the ones you have in that tank?
Our originals.
They survive a three-mile island every day. They are ugly-looking brutes.
Okay, all right, and our plant, CleanCo, they just submitted their last payment app. With that, I went through with Commonwealth, it's 99.78% of the project is complete.
Good.
With that, we have a year warranty on everything they've done, and the stuff that's not complete is basically landscaping and things like that.
Are they still wanting a walk-through?
Wayne will be back to do one more walk-through after his last check.
Yeah, let me know, I'd like to go along with that.
With that, we've been doing our own housekeeping around the plant, we clean trucks, continuing to paint inside the plant. We did some new safety signs, we replaced some of our lights with some LEDs, and then we're cleaning up the trees inside the gates. Along with that, it's been neglected kind of over the years, we've kept it clean, but our actual discharge area into Mill Creek, now there's like a walkway to go down to see our effluent coming into the Mill Creek. We'll be adding stone and maybe possibly a walkway out. We will be ordering our first batch of aluminum sulfate, that's gonna be the chemical we use to remove phosphorus in our water. We have to be in compliance by August 1st of 2019, so we have some time to play this to get into compliance.
And Commonwealth is working with you on?
Yes.
Good.
And our collections, we're just normal locates, we're continuing our routine maintenance and sewer and storm line that I put in. The update on that, since we're doing both at the same time, my project that's pretty, going pretty slow because we're getting held up quite a bit, so.
Is that the Leachent project?
No, this is just our cleaning, where we started in the heights right now, and we're working our way towards.
Oh, this, oh, okay.
Yep. Update on Air Vac C, which is the Moose Air Vac Station, we did get everything fixed there, so there's no leak inside the station. Another update with the Lucas Street lift station, which is in front of the scrapyard. I have a meeting September 4th with Robin O'Neil?
O'Neil.
Yep, yep, with Duke.
Yep.
To get that project back going forward. And also, we have a lift station that's currently only running on one pump, it's the one that gets fed from Country Meadows, and I'm getting quotes for that being fixed slash replaced. Other than that, that's all I have.
We're real close to making a decision there. Any questions for Marcus? I don't say it enough times, but for all you guys, Lenny, Marcus, Derek, Andy, Tom, you guys are doing a heck of a job. Randy, I think anybody who's paying attention can see you're very, very busy and knocking stuff off right and left, thank you, thank you all. Thanks, Marcus, appreciate it. Mr. Derek?
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the month of July, we did the following duties, we read meters, orders, repair to replace bad meters, locates, backwash the filter beds, shut offs, swept and mopped the plant, mowed multiple times, ran the weed eat around some fire hydrants that needed it, weed-eated around the plant, wellhouses and tower lots, hauled in more fill dirt for the new concrete pad at the lower shed, that pad is complete now, and we are still hauling in some fill dirt around it. Cut out the blacktop and potholed the water mains at East Fourth Street and Indian Avenue for the Fourth Street storm sewer project. The sewer department did assist us on that with the Vector, assisted HRP and shut the main valves off and turned them back on at 16th and Monroe Street so they can make their connections for the new water main. Line located a service line at 15th and Monroe Street for HRP, traced out the service line at 1228 Washington Street, cut out the concrete and found the curb stop and raised it up and made sure we could get on it and was able to shut it off if needed. They were doing some sewer work there and we couldn't find the shut off, and wouldn't you know, somebody poured concrete over it. Shut off the main valves at 14th and Monroe Street and Madison and Main Street as well, so HRP can make the final connection of the old four-inch water main on Monroe Street, or the final disconnection, sorry. Digs that were performed, we made two new one-inch taps at 810 Mitchell Drive, that was a new house in a pole barn, repaired a water leak at 1223 Franklin Street, made a new one-inch tap at 2989 Walbash Road for a new house. And here comes the fun parts, fixed a water leak at Sixth Street and Ohio Street, the sewer department assisted with the Vector, the fire department assisted us by loaning us two sections of two-and-a-half inch fire hose for our trash pump, and the street department assisted us by loaning us their big truck to haul the back fill in. Fixed another water leak at East Sixth Street and Ohio Street, HIS Construction that they broke during the Fourth Street storm sewer project. And then call-outs, I was called out on the 19th at 10:00 PM to 982 West Eighth Street for low water pressure. I pulled the meter and there was great pressure there, the homeowner had a huge filter in there, and the situation pretty much became their issue, we had great water pressure at the meter. Randy Carr was called out on the 26th at 4:00 PM to 618 Main Street for a leak inside, that would be Times Theater. The water was shut off for the curb, at the curb for repairs to be made by the owner. Carr was called, Randy Carr was called out again on the 28th at 7:30 PM to 314 West Fifth Street for a water leak inside the residence, water was shut off at the curb for the repairs to be made. That's all I got.
Any good questions for Derek?
The Monroe Street project, how, what's the status of that, how it, how much completed and?
The water main is 100% complete, all the service lines are hooked over, everybody's on the new main, all the hydrants are live, right now they're doing all the restoration work.
So it's virtually completed, it's just mop up, if you will, some cement work and then some landscaping to be done. Went pretty well, it went very quickly.
Yes, I was impressed, as smooth as it went, so.
One of the smoothest construction projects we've had, just went very, very well.
There was some little adjustments, but we had to get eyes on what we had at the intersections before we can make final decisions, but we made those changes as we went, and I feel that everything is hooked up the way it should be for the residents, let alone for us as the city.
Yeah, Derek did a great job watchdogging, dogging out as it went, and there were some things brought to light that saved us a lot of time and effort, they actually finished ahead of schedule, didn't they?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Anything else for Derek? You're not on vacation or anything in the next?
Man, I wasn't gonna say a word. Derek, I was not gonna say a word, I promise.
Thanks, Derek, that's an inside joke, folks. Oh, let's see, Karen, what happened at the Area Planning Commission?
The meeting was canceled, I have no information. I'll make a tape of that, I apologize.
So much for Karen, you know, that's great.
We talked about that earlier today, didn't we, Karen?
Yes, we did.
Goodman, Fedco, are you skipping Harry?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll bring him in here somewhere, I'll bring him in somewhere. Goodman?
Sorry, Harry, I don't know what you did.
Well, he got himself pushed to the head of the line.
Yeah, I know.
Did you notice?
I know.
You've been flagged, let's get going.
Be on at 9 o'clock, Eric.
Goodman, Fedco.
Fedco met August 2nd, reporting a checking account balance of $10,046.75, operating reserve of $72,582.52. The new chamber director, Jillian Kramer, was introduced to the board, discussed, we still have some open board seats, Terry has been reaching out to candidates, and when we get some people to accept, accept, well, the board will vote. To reference, you talked about a little bit earlier, the lit tax, David Heidi and Terry spoke with Mike Karikoff about the proposed legislation. The lit tax, and the way it's allocated, currently, your, that tax goes to the county you reside in, they want to change that to make it the county you work in, which is gonna be great for.
Big cities.
Kokomo, South Bend, Mishawaka, it's gonna kill the rural, rural counties.
I know.
That comes straight out. So, at that meeting, you know, we discussed, as the Economic Development Board, we need to reach out to the legislatures and legislators and tell them, this is not a good idea, and I would encourage everyone here to do the same, I mean, because that, that's just really gonna put a lot of the rural counties in a bind if they do that. It's come up several years before, but this year it seems to be getting more traction. So it's really something to be looking at. The Community Readiness Initiative, so we decided as a board, the community readiness initiative is something we want to lead the community through, we're signed up and set up in the system, but the first step's recognize our geography, and we decided to do Fulton County, not just a town, it's the whole county. The second step is to put together a team of six to eight people with one person being the point of contact, and at that meeting, we banded about some names, working on getting that committee set up. The business incubator we've been talking about is still in the works, Chris Van Dyne's waiting to see if the environmental's clear, they do, he'll purchase the building, and he's still looking for tenants to help with the debt service, but that still isn't moving. October 18th at Jared's, it'll be open to the public, will be a FedCo pitch, it's been sponsored by some local businesses, RMC, NIPSCO, Rapid View, and possibly at this time, Smith, Thorne, Smith.
Do I have a second on that?
Brian, what was that day?
Is your report still going on? Give it a yellow flag.
October 18th.
What was the day?
October 18th.
You probably ought to be there, Marty, to see how much you owe.
On Ivy Tag, Terry spoke with Chancellor McCurdy about their future in the county, and was told we are on their timeline for community outreach, whatever that means. We've mentioned Frank Foley time and time again, and it's really, it's the same, you know, the property was closed on, he does own property, he's paying tax on it. Terry and the mayor were planning a trip to go see him, just to kind of see what his plans are for the property. That hasn't occurred yet.
No, we went, we went, yeah. We took the Jenny Lee, the old puddle jumper, and made it over there and got his. We took the Jenny Lee, the old puddle jumper, and made it over there and got his layout and his entrance and exit points, so that that can be included in the Forest Street project out there.
Okay, there was a company out of North Carolina that inquired about the Dean's Building. So Terry put them in contact with a group in Dallas, and they responded, the building is not for sale. So Terry referred them to a couple, another couple sites. What's that? Schnabel Tier, at the time, was installing their brewing equipment the following week, and they should have beer sometime in October. We also have a new building owner downtown. 505 Main Street was purchased by Dennis Williams.
Who happens to be in the audience tonight.
Welcome, Dennis. Our newest entrepreneur.
Congratulations.
And Dr. Kent Hoff has opened up his apartments on Ninth Street and currently has two renters. And unless Terry has anything to add, or you have questions, that concludes my report.
I believe he's up to three now.
Four, I think.
Four. Okay.
I'm seeing, I'm getting five. Can I have six?
Is it five? Ask 12 to rent.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
The only other thing I would add is, we did get another USDA grant for a revolving loan fund for small business, and that was a $93,000 award.
Great. Would you just like to transfer right on to the redevelopment commission, or Terry?
I don't think I...
Sorry, transition right on into that.
Yeah, I'll go back a little bit on Fedco. We did get...
I know your time's limited. You have to get out of here.
I know, it's late. Golly. Want to get hairy up here soon as possible. I did talk with the Realtor that was looking at an allotment by Walmart for a wings, et cetera. It looks like the offer on the property has been accepted. They're 120 days or so out from closing.
I heard today there was a purchase agreement signed.
Yeah. On that Fedco pitch, that's an idea where either existing or startup businesses can come before we've got three judges lined up right now and be awarded up to $10,000 for their business expansion or development. And I guess I said, we talked about Taylor Chemicals and Frank Bolley. I did have a lead we worked this week for a, actually, a state senator who contacted us about a data center that they were looking at a location near 31, but we don't have the building inventory close enough to a substation to work that out, unfortunately. So it would've been a nice power user, and then also a lot of equipment. On the redevelopment commission, we did get our stormwater protection plan done, our final design done, our DNR approval done, our US Army Corps approval done, as long as we do a boardwalk through the wetlands for the Nickel Plate Trail project. We're still waiting for IDIM approval of the stormwater protection plan. We did run the notification ad for bids on Saturday in the Sentinel, so we're accepting bids until September 11th for that project. Phase one will be all the clearing and getting base down. Hopefully, that can be done yet this fall. And you have a new member of the board? And we do have a new member.
Todd.
Todd Beeler. Yeah, so he'll be, the first meeting he'll be in on will be the September 12th meeting. And that's where we hope to open the bids for the Nickel Plate Trail project.
Yeah, you might, you might just touch base with him. I saw him at the football game, and he was kind of wondering what his first meeting was gonna be.
Yeah, September 12th.
Okay. Anybody got any questions for Derek? Thanks, Terry. Harry! Come on up.
I don't see his name.
Yeah, yeah, Winford W.
Yeah, Winford W.
I have nothing to say.
Really, the only thing I do, there was a conference call between Pat Jacobs and Stephen Ray about the MSRP project, and they've got their, they've kind of agreed to their timeline, and she's got the drawings of the preliminary drawings about completed. She anticipates meeting with the building owners next week, or calling them to schedule. She'll be in town for two days to go over costing of those projects. So that's proceeding. And then they're, she, they're also, take those same drawings and turn it in for, there's a, you know, it has to go in front of historic preservation people, and they have to give it their blessing as well. So she's preparing that project. We anticipate there'll be a few that'll probably pull out, but still moving ahead with that. We did install, Lance and I installed three of the benches downtown that weren't in the path of the streetlights. There are two of them located at American Legion and one at Flirt. So if you want to see what the benches look like, there, there's two there, three there. And we'll probably be able to put a few more in, hopefully, before this fall. We're gonna probably hold off on anything that's gonna be near a streetlight, since those may be coming out.
Harry, first one they put in, he texted me a picture, and here's the guy, a guy sleeping on the bench. Well, I'm glad we got the homeless off the ground. Kudos.
Couldn't resist. So tempting.
Got the pick and sense of humor from me, Terry. Anything else for Harry? Thanks, Harry. And Harry, thanks for your efforts.
All right, appreciate it.
Mason and Ken's not here. BZA and Council on Aging, Councilman Smith?
Yes, sir. The BZA met last week, it was a very short meeting, two items on the agenda. Normally, those meetings aren't prior to our meeting, but this month, it was, they had a sign variance for the Community Foundation on Ninth Street. If you haven't seen that sign, it's pretty nice. And they had a front yard, a deck on the front of a house. And the only unusual thing about that was it wasn't at the lake, it was up on Ohio Street. Both of those items passed. Council on Aging and BZA.
You're thinking the same thing.
Mine ended up at the lake. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Go ahead.
You have the floor.
I'm used to you. Transpo's still doing over 150 trips a day. They have received the 14-passenger, the new van, that's been received, and it's been very well received, and certainly a nice addition to the fleet. The drivers are all undergoing their annual physicals, and they've hired a new part-time driver. With RSVP, the basic conversation was about the trips that they've had and are going to have, and they had a day trip to the Indiana State Fair that was very well attended and received. They have a trip coming up on September 9th to Myrtle Beach. They have a trip to Virginia Beach in the spring, and they're going to Colorado Springs in the fall of 2019. They are also planning on maybe getting, if they get enough people, organizing a day trip to Brown County in Nashville, Indiana, for $20, which is pretty, they're trying to do a low-cost day trip to just encourage a few more people to go. So they have received the notification of their big grant, and so that, and that was actually increased a little bit by the state, so that's good. Council on Aging and Transpo both, I'm sorry, and RSVP both got a little good news with the Community Foundation gave both of them a pop-up grant for $1,000, so that was nice. And also, Council on Aging has, is the recipient, has been a recipient, and we're going to be looking at spending money from a Beacon grant that was $5,000. That, that is kind of old news, but it's just not going to get spent. Working on cleaning the new carpets that we all put in, and that's the extent of my report, unless there are questions.
Well, you missed the fact that you and I were over there for breakfast.
Well, that's true. We were, yeah. The mayor made a very nice presentation to the seniors. I thought they were well engaged, and they asked some good questions. So, yes, we met there for breakfast a couple of weeks ago, had a really nice little visit. That's a spirited building with spirited people.
It is. It is. And Councilman Smith and I volunteered to flip pancakes or serve eggs, and they said, no.
Don't even go through the door.
Don't even touch the kitchen.
Right. That's right. I'm sorry, Ted, I forgot we didn't mention that.
No, that's all right. Anybody got any questions for Marty? Thank you, sir. Chase, solid waste and animal adoption?
I was unable to make both meetings.
Okay. All righty. Tree Board EMS?
Tree Board met on August 2nd and the 16th. The main topics, the conversation were the bid submissions for tree removal and trimming. And I believe, shall I correct me? I believe that the person who is, the company that was awarded the bid has signed everything and getting everything going.
I'm not certain that the contract has been signed yet.
Okay, well, we're in the process of getting it done. And after the initial bids went out, then there were several other trees, including one that Lenny talked about on West Seventh that needed to come out, so we had supplemental bids going out for other, not emergency basis, but a much quicker, you know, basis than what we normally do. So we're looking to get trees trimmed and removed. And also, then looking forward to the, this fall sometime, getting the trees replaced in order to help maintain the tree city status. We have to, you know, not just take everything out, but replace a mess, we need to. So the Tree Board's looking at doing all that. So hopefully, you know, the next meeting, I'll be able to update the board on the Council on what's coming out and how big they're going.
Okay.
And no, there was no EMS meeting.
No EMS meeting. Okay. Any questions for Councilman Fitzwater? Thank you, Brian. Water Board, John?
The Water Board met, and the news was that the basic new things that Derek didn't discuss, I'll cover some of the things, a couple of things he didn't, he didn't mention is that they did approve the purchase of the new Ford dump truck. And then they'd also been talking about the two-year-old write-offs, and the board made a motion to accept the two-year-old write-offs and not go through with the small claim courts anymore with getting the money through small claim courts. It's basically, it's basically a deal, it costs you $10 to get five. So it was a good business move on their part, I felt. And they did the discussion on the, the discussion on unidirectional flushing program that was tabled from the previous meeting. Marvin made a motion to keep this on schedule for the spring of 2019 as planned, continuing this program every other year with use of the chemical Orca before each flushing with a second from Keith and a third from Carolyn. And then there was the thing that's really gonna get you an update, was presented to the board on employees taking a vacation for the month of August. None.
Yeah, I'm not sure how Derek worked that.
None were, so...
I don't think he heard you, Doug.
Oh, yeah, he was... There being, no further business, then Marvin adjourned the meeting, second Carolyn, third Keith. And that ended it. Any other questions? If you have any, sir?
Anybody got anything for John? Thank you, Councilman Garrett. Okay, moving right along down to ADA concerns, we have...
Ted, if I may?
Yes.
Address that, because you may have just skipped right over it.
Okay.
We have had a couple of concerns come to us, one being about an accessible ramp at one of our pavilions, so we are going to address that. And also, we have some ADA concerns on, mm-hmm, yep, just lost it. Main Street. We've got some cracks in the sidewalk up there, so we are looking into that. Ted, that's just very recent, came up this week. And so we are looking into what we can do to address some of that cracking that's caused some upheaval heaping of the sidewalks, and it is in our slope. It's within the ADA slope. So those are some things that we are addressing, and you as the council, since you are actually the ADA authority on that, I want to make sure you guys are aware that we don't have anything that needs immediate action on your part, because we are taking action internally for it.
The other thing that bears mentioning, too, we've been kicking around the fact, I was quite impressed with the Adams County folks and how they went about their jail process by creating a CUM jail fund 10 years ago. And we've, Shaw and I have been talking, I'd like to present to you folks at some time when we get everything straightened out budget-wise, a CUM sidewalk fund. We start accruing some monies for sidewalks. If we don't do that, we're never gonna get on that. The one thing that's, pardon the pun, hit me like a ton of bricks when we're walking, is how terrible our sidewalks are. And we still have a lot of the town that have brick sidewalks that are just in all sorts of disarray. So we would like to start with a modest contribution, and we'll take a look at maybe CCB monies, whatever, to start collecting monies to do that. We think about downtown a lot, but I'll tell you what, our patrons are folks who live in the suburbs and stuff. We need some sidewalks.
And I will say, and on that, to piggyback off of what the mayor said, I have actually taken some time and looked and kind of, at what we have existing and current, and how we can change some of our budget structure, that we could adjust some of those numbers to accommodate that with our existing funds that we have. If we were to do an additional CUM sidewalk fund, I've been looking at the DLGF information sheets to make sure we follow the steps that, that it is an applicable fund for us to be able to do. So there's some steps and procedures that I need to make sure of as well, move it forward or something like that. But yes, we are looking at what we can do to move forward, because it is, it is a problem. We're very well aware of it. And, you know, with our federal ADA requirements at each one of our corners, the slopes, I mean, there's, there's a lot to factor in when we start down these, this path.
Well, it's a 30-year process that they allow you to, to address that, but hey, guess what? We can sit here and say that's a long time, but all of a sudden, you turn around and you're right, you're right at 11th hour. So we need to start doing, doing some things in regards to that. So it's called repairing. And we'll, we'll have more for you, whether we go back to a 50-50 program, or 25-75, or whatever. It's kind of, kind of depend on how, how the funds are that we get collected. But we're gonna start doing that. Anybody think that's not a good thought?
That's a great thought.
Smith, Thorne, Smith sponsors.
You mentioned sidewalks, and I'm up and down 18th Street a lot, and there is a new user of that sidewalk.
What sounds like you.
No.
Okay.
There's some, there is a lady that I see pretty regularly in an electric scooter, and I think, well, she either didn't need the scooter earlier, or she didn't use it because she didn't want to go out in the road, but now with the sidewalk. And she's up and down there quite often, so, well. The other thing I would like to mention, too, because we've mentioned it in a negative vein a couple of times, the sign at the entry into Kroger, into the...
The big marquee sign.
Yes. It has been repaired, and it looks very nice. So they did it, they, they fixed what was all dented and the wires aren't hanging out.
I, I'll just tell you, I think the word got back to him, that it looked pretty bad.
Well, it did.
It did. It did.
So it was, it was fixed, and it looks nice.
So, thanks. And that situation down there is working out very well, the, you know, the new entrance situation, now that people get used to it, it's working out pretty well.
I actually saw a horse and buggy go out the wrong way and had to make a U-turn in that, and they did not violate by, by turning there. They did, they got the horse to make a U-turn with the buggy.
Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but in that climate, a U-turn would be a sheep, not a horse, right?
Oh, she is.
I apologize, Chief.
It is getting late, isn't it?
Okay, that takes care of, takes care of the, yeah.
You didn't look at me.
That takes care of the ADA concerns. Any legal issues, Count or Attorney Perkins?
I think you've all covered it so well.
Thank you. I have a motion to adjourn by Goodman, seconded by Fitz... I have a motion to adjourn by Goodman, seconded by Fitzwater. Those in favor, we are adjourned. Thank you.